Jau and good afternoon. My name is Bernie Golding. I'm a nurse educator and author. I am also Fijian Australian, so I have a foot in the Pacific and a foot in Australia. And I'm very honoured to be the emcee today. On behalf of the event organisers, I would like to welcome you all today to the Melbourne Town Hall in person and online from around the Oceania region and around the world. I would like to thank you all for being here today, especially the debaters, as we debate this very, very important question. Is Australia doing enough to support West Papua? May we begin today by respectfully acknowledging the traditional custodians of the land, the Banarong Boon Warrung and the Warundroo Woi Warrung peoples of the eastern Kulin nation, and also pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging. I would like to extend that respect to all Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people here today. I would also like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of all of the lands of Oceania. And I would like to pay our respects to elders, past, present and emerging. I was very honoured to write a book last year called Children of the Twelve Tribes, linking all of the indigenous populations of the Oceania region together. And I would also like to thank the organisers today for bringing us all together. I do need to acknowledge Julian Gillies, Lakarkas and his mother Pepe Gillies for that beautiful rendition of the West Papua anthem, so if we can give them all a hand. I would also like to acknowledge some special guests and welcome Dr Jacob Rumbiak, Minister for Foreign Affairs, West Papua Provisional Government, and Ms Babouen Moreno, President of the West Papua Women's Office in the Docklands. We are also very fortunate to have Dr Jonathan Bennie, a specialist in Chinese Studies at Monash University and former President of the Debating Association of Victoria, and his assistant, Lemac Mora. We are also very fortunate to have two of our experts joining us on Zoom today from New Zealand, Major Ross Himona Kiora. And the guest joining us from Vanuatu, Maurice Kelleran. Hallo. And now we are very fortunate to have welcoming the debaters and also introducing each of them. Sarah Muñga from the Democratic Republic of Congo, who will outline each of the guests that we are having as debaters this afternoon. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vis Golding, and good afternoon, everyone. Reverend Dr Gordon Priest is the first speaker to assert that Australia is supporting West Papua. Reverend Prince is Senior Policy Officer of Catholic Social Service Victoria. He serves in the Anglican Diocese of the Social Responsibility Committee, Director of the Ridley College and University of Divinity Centre for Applied Christian Ethics and Director of the Evangelical Alliance for Christianity and Society. Greetings to Reverend Priest.
Thank you for that welcome and thank you for everyone coming here. Is Australia doing enough to support West Papua? Well, as Facebook says, our relationship status of Australia, Indonesia and West Papua is complicated. We're triangulated. Perhaps each member of that trio is triangulated in some ways. We're middling Pacific power with West Asian pretensions. And we don't want to be meddling in Melanesia, seems to be the prevailing attitude. Arguing the affirmative, my colleagues Ross and Chris and I will argue that we're now, with a new government, doing enough for now, not the past nor necessarily the future. In terms of definitions, these are always contextual, but enough and support are comparative, not absolute terms. Yes, things should have been a lot better for the West Papuans from an absolute human rights perspective. But modern human rights and democratic language originate in a political and historical context involving practical conflict, negotiation and cooperation, hopefully. Not just high ideals of an ethical Everest. Politically, democracy is a numbers game, and Indonesia have the numbers, about 10 times Australia's population. The West Papuans have been marginalised by waves of Indonesian transmigration, a government policy in the big archipelago and the number of islands that constitute Indonesia. People who are seeking land and prosperity and occupy at least 60% of the coastal cities, outnumbering the West Papuans, and the coastal cities are obviously, in just about all cases, the critical ones in terms of communication, trade, et cetera, et cetera, defence. And culturally and linguistically, Indonesia is the largest Muslim country in the world. And culturally, very different in terms of the Indonesian migrants who have come. But we should remember that there are shared Abrahamic roots between the Christian population, now minority Christian population, but was almost overwhelmingly Christian population. And so there are still some hopes for peace and reconciliation in that sense of Abrahamic roots. When we look at the current situation, we realise that history moves and cannot be easily undone. We can only make the best out of the mess in retrospect, perhaps the lesser evil. Engaging in negotiation with Indonesians and West Papuans. And despite the claim of the sort of ethics of proximity, that we are only 67 kilometres away, I think, and that's an important claim, think of something like the Good Samaritan story that's about the ethics of proximity, not necessarily loving everyone. None of us finite beings can actually do that at any particular time. But the best that we can hope for is a kind of proximate justice, some sort of approximation to what might be justice, particularly when we look back. Time is of the essence regarding doing enough. Without an acronism, we can say that we didn't do enough at the time of the forced fake plebiscite that took place in 1969. This is not tragic, to use that overused word, which describes sort of faith and inevitability, something that cannot be avoided, but a deliberate travesty of justice by Indonesia. The UN complicit in that, it was one of the UN's greatest ever failures. But Australia wasn't necessarily a big player in that. We were one of the sort of figures in the US and others pulling the strings in relationship to the Cold War at the time. Fifty years later, to use the classic postmodern phrase, we've moved on. We didn't do enough then, but we have moved on now. Millions of Indonesians have been moved in terms of transmigration, and they've made their lives and they've put down roots. Our question is about, is Australia doing enough now to support West Papuans? Present tense. Our new government's first indications are promising. It's put a high priority in relationships with Indonesia, a long overdue visit by the Prime Minister, Penny Wong literally speaking their language for a whole speech. I presume she'd adapted her, being Chinese Malay, had adapted from Bahasa Malay to Bahasa Indonesian. We also find that Chris Bowen has taken a diploma in Indonesian as well. And the first cabinet Muslim minister, Ed Husey, went to Jakarta as well for that visit. It's important to remember just how important the religious issue and the cultural issue is in relationship to the two peoples. We're not talking about a flat kind of shallow secularism. We're talking about deep multiculturalism, which is inevitably religious just about anywhere in the global societies that we operate in. Our often tear and repair relationship with Indonesia has been marked by controversy, regardless of who's been in power, asylum seeker boats, spying, live cattle export bans, travel warnings, terrorist attacks, capital punishment for drug smugglers and West Papua issues and East Timor issues as well. But we need to manage the inevitable differences and seek reconciliation. It is difficult, but not impossible, especially cultural and religious differences complicated by colonial and indigenous and historical relations, especially as the past is in many ways a foreign country, as they say. Learning to learn the language of our big regional brother is beneficial wherever possible. That wherever possible, that growing dialogue, when it comes to the little brother, and I'm not meaning this in a patronising sense, I'm meaning it population-wise comparatively, little brother West Papua needs to be a triologue, not just a dialogue. And that's devilishly hard without being triangulated. I think the best thing we can do, in my last words, the best thing we can do is, if we can model indigenous relationships and reconciliations with our voice from the heart and model what real dialogue is like, then that may be the current government's best thing that they can do in providing a model for some kind of, in a very different situation, but nonetheless, an incredibly important situation. We'll hear further from Ross by video and particularly about the geopolitical situation and from Chris particularly about economics and trade. Thank you.
Pablo Peskos is the second speaker who asserts that Australia is not doing enough to assist West Papua. Pablo is very interested in politics, world affairs and what Australia can do to assist the West Papua people. He reckons that the children of today will have a major influence on Australia of the future. Thank you, Pablo.
Thank you, Sarah, for your introduction. And thank you, everyone, for attending today, particularly members of the West Papua community, for whom today's topic is very real. 500,000 men, women, children and infants murdered. 60,000 West Papua residents displaced, torn from their homes. 663,000 hectares of West Papua land stolen from its rightful owners. 1,200 protesters in the last year alone arrested and disappeared, many never seen again. For the last 60 years, the people of West Papua have been under the rule of a tyrannical Indonesian regime that has invaded West Papua land, murdered West Papua people, raped West Papua women, destroyed West Papua resources to make way for palm oil plantations and committed countless other heinous and hideous crimes. Statistics such as these may sound like something from a history lesson, but they certainly are not. This is what has happened and what continues to happen in West Papua as I speak to you right now. A country has been taken from its people. Crimes continue to be committed. And given all of this, you would think and hope that Indonesia's biggest neighbour, Australia, would be trying to stop this from happening, would be standing up for the West Papua people as they should do. But they are not. In 1948, Winston Churchill remarked that those who fail to learn from history are condemned to repeat it. Churchill was reflecting on the lessons to be learned from World War Two. As we all now know, one of the reasons that led to the war was the decision by these supposedly wise old heads to appease Germany, even as Germany was invading countries such as Austria and Czechoslovakia. As a consequence of this appeasement, millions died, lives were torn apart, entire countries were destroyed, all because the nations of the world turned a blind eye to the tyranny of Nazi Germany. Now let me be clear. The atrocities committed by Nazi Germany are without parallel in human history. And I'm not saying the crimes being committed by Indonesia in West Papua are of the same magnitude. They are not. What I am saying is that the common factor that has led to so much suffering is appeasement. Now let's move forward in time and close to home, to the year 2002, when the country of East Timor gained its independence from Indonesia. Like West Papua, the people of East Timor had been subjugated by Indonesia. Like West Papua, protests for independence were ruthlessly suppressed by Indonesia. And like West Papua, most countries around the world chose to appease Indonesia. Everyone knew that East Timor deserved independence. Everyone knew it was the right thing to do. But due to a focus on politics, economics, finance and self-interest, the nations of the world, led or should I say misled by these wise old heads, continued to appease Indonesia. How many times must we forget the lessons of history and innocent people suffer as a result? As many of you will know, the Australian government, elected in May this year, has committed to introducing an indigenous voice to federal parliament as part of the Uluru Statement from the Heart. In fact, this commitment was the very first thing new Prime Minister Anthony Albanese made in his election victory speech. As an Australian, this makes me proud, but it also leaves me confused and saddened. Proud because Australia is rightfully showing long overdue respect to First Nations Australians by seeking to introduce a voice to parliament. Such a voice will do much to ensure that First Nations Australians are listened to and heard, as they should be. But I'm also sad that while we are beginning to learn from our mistakes in relation to First Nations Australians, we are not doing the same for the people of West Papua. Instead, we continue to suppress the voices of West Papuans by continuing to appease Indonesia. Finally, I am not standing here today talking to you as an expert on West Papua. I am not an experienced professor who knows everything about the West Papua people. I am not a wise old head. However, as a young Australian, here's something I do know. My generation will inherit this country, but we do not want to inherit an Australia that is stained due to ignoring the completely unjustified and indefensible human rights abuses happening on a daily basis, happening right now while we sit in comfort, happening right above our borders. I can only begin to imagine how young West Papuans must feel, how they must wonder if they will ever experience a future free of oppression and dispossession. And I am sorry and ashamed of how little our country is doing. As a regional power and as a signatory to the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples, it is Australia's responsibility to stand up for the people of West Papua. Once again, this December, massive protests will erupt in West Papua. And as we spend time with our families, have a barbecue or lays on the beach this December, the people of West Papua will continue to suffer under the iron grip of a malicious and maligned Indonesian regime. So, is Australia doing enough to help West Papua? Well, given that West Papuans continue to be killed, continue to be kidnapped, continue to be raped and continue to have their homes and livelihoods destroyed, it is obvious that the answer is a resounding and damning no.
Can I just say, as a young boy, you are incredible, amazing, like, oh, jeez. Anyways, on Zoom from New Zealand, we will now hear from Major Ross Himona. Major Himona served in Vietnam and Borneo during his 20 years as a soldier in the New Zealand Army. He studied Bahasa Indonesian and spent some time in Indonesia. He is a passionate advocate of the Maori development and arts governance, as well as an essayist and poet. Let's welcome Major Himona.
Sorry, folks, I'm just getting our sound sorted out. Hello, everyone. Salamatsiam. Salamatsiam dari Kota Danyubur di Nagara, Selandi, Barat. Good afternoon from Danyubur in Alturo, New Zealand. I'm an indigenous New Zealander. I've spent a lot of time in Australia over the last 60 years, and I'm still travelling across the and I'm still travelling across the ditch now that we can travel again. Norita Tenakoto, Tenakoto, Tenakoto Kato in my language, greetings, greetings to you all. I deem it a privilege to call Dr. Anders Jacob Rumbiak my friend and to be able to offer occasional support to his West Papua court. George Jacob, salam. Akantatapi, however. If we are to convince Australian governments to reverse policy and to support the people of West Papua, we need firstly to acknowledge geopolitical reality, and secondly, to offer a way forward through that reality, if there is a way forward. To ignore reality and to offer only rhetoric and hyperbole will continue to consign the plight of West Papua to the back of the broom cupboard of Australian policy. The question is, is there a way out of the broom cupboard? My aim is to bring geopolitical reality to the forefront of this debate. Firstly, some history. During the Cold War, Indonesia was drawn into the anti-communist orbit of the USA. It also became a buffer between Australia and the possible spread of communism from China and elsewhere. The annexation of West Papua in 1963 was actively supported, even promoted, by the United States. The annihilation of the Indonesian Communist Party by the army in 1965 was secretly supported by the USA's Central Intelligence Agency. Indonesia was inactively and willingly drawn further into the United States orbit and Australia's. Things changed with the threat of terrorism and with the Bali bombings in 2002. Counterterrorism became the focus of security cooperation, leading to the Lombok Treaty. Indonesia is the largest Muslim country on the globe. It is important that Indonesia root out terrorists to prevent that country from becoming a terrorist base which would threaten Australia's security. Australia, sorry, Indonesia, has done that. The Lombok Treaty, signed between Australia and Indonesia in 2006, provides for the stability, security, and prosperity of both countries, and the recognition of the sovereignty, territorial integrity, national unity, and political independence of each other, and non-interference in the internal affairs of one another. The treaty serves Australia's needs as much as it serves the needs of Indonesia. It is not a one-sided treaty, as some would have it. It covers defence, law enforcement, counterterrorism, intelligence sharing, maritime security, and aviation safety and security. Those areas of common ground are relatively easy to manage. But as Dr. Priest has pointed out, managing the inevitable differences is critical. Beyond the treaty lie the critical and often difficult aspects of the relationship that have to be carefully managed. A new comprehensive strategic partnership was signed in 2018. Our third speaker, Chris, will address the economic aspect of that agreement. The relationship becomes more important as we move into a new global order. The new threat in this region and globally is China. China's aim is to end US dominance in East Asia and in the Western Pacific. In the South China Sea, it is engaged in Cold War with the US and with Australia, among others. One way or another, China will take over Taiwan. In the end, the USA will be powerless to prevent it. In our region, the new powers will be China, the USA, and India, each with their own geopolitical interests and their own agendas. Australia and Indonesia will both have to look closely at their foreign and security policies to accommodate the competing interests of China, the USA, and India. Australia must stay close to its near neighbour, of nearly 280 million people. The stability, security, and prosperity of Australia and its nearly 26 million people depends on it. The present government seems acutely aware of that. Dr. Priest has outlined steps they've already made in prioritising relations with Indonesia. The situation in West Papua and Australia's response to that situation, whatever that might be, has to be seen within that geopolitical reality. We, on the other side of the debate, do not deny that the West Papua peoples have been sacrificed at the altar of geopolitics for sixty years now. We do not deny that they have suffered horrendously as they have been recolonised by Indonesia. We do not deny that they're being crowded out and turned into an oppressed and exploited minority in their own land. In some ways, it reminds me of the history of my own colonised tribes. However, as Dr. Priest noted, history cannot be undone. The real question is what might be done now and what might be done in the future. The real question is how to find a way for Australia to support the West Papua people within the constraints of geopolitical reality. Is there a real solution to that dilemma? The dilemma at the centre of this debate. Is there a way out of that broom cupboard? That is the question that must be answered. Khatira, Abis.
Our fourth debater, Maurice Calloway, which I think is on Zoom, who works for the West Papua Provincial Government Agency of Foreign Affairs. Prior to that, he serves as the Venawatu Coordinator for the United Nations Women Project. In 2002, Maurice delivered his first speech on West Papua while still a student at Victoria University. On Aboriginal land in Mariborong, Maurice and Uncle Larry Walsh opened the right road for West Papua to take its position in Australian foreign policy.
We indigenous people of the Pacific feel about Australia's involvement in the structure of self-determination and independence of West Papua. In 1962, when Australia signed the New York Agreement along with the rest of the United Nations General Assembly, we Pacific Islanders were all still colonised. We have closer relationships with West Papua. South Pacific Commission organized seminars for a smooth transition for independence. We were all in independence mood. However, none of us heard or knew about the United Nations transferring West Papua to Indonesia. Everybody knows that we in the Pacific have a lot of reservations over Australia's climate change policies, but no one knows how hungry we are about the Australia's denial to West Papua's right to self-determination. In 2015, we were pleased and proud when Solomon Island's Prime Minister, Mr. Manase Songofare, made a stand and found a way to bring West Papua into the Melanesian spearhead. It certainly put West Papua as a serious independent-seeking colony on the map, and it was a proud moment in 2019 when the Pacific Islands Forum passed its first motion on West Papua, demanding that its members investigate and address the root cause of the problem and encourage Indonesia to facilitate the UN fat crime remission, which it agreed to in 2017. The African Caribbean and Pacific followed suit with a similar motion. That meant half of the members of the United Nations General Assembly were selected and thinking about West Papua gearing up for action, except Australia. We in the Pacific don't understand why Australia government and indeed the Australian people ignore how the West Papua are approaching their independence. The West Papua's cause for self-determination is not the usual form taken by colonists. In 2020, they established a government called the West Papua Provincial Government. The West Papua Provincial Government is a transitional government from a non-state government to a fully fledged government that is capable of negotiating with the Indonesian government and the auspices of the United Nations. It is obvious that Indonesia will always deny the resistance of the West Papua state and will keep on denying it until Australia starts taking its own national security interests and studies what is happening just seventy-two kilometres across Torres Strait. And the Australians know that the state of West Papua is a little ended by rights and international law in line with the modern international legal principles and conventions. As I speak, I wish to let the people of Australia know that eighty-three governments are now calling for Indonesia to grant the United Nations access to West Papua through the generations of an informed evidence-based report. This includes the states of the Pacific Islands, including Australia and New Zealand, the seventy-nine states of Africa, Caribbean, Pacific groups, as well as the Parliament of the Netherlands, United Kingdom, Spain, Poland, and Arabia. Finally, let's take briefly about the laws of state responsibility for the international wrong acts, which was adopted by the United Nations General Assembly in 2005. These laws affirm that dead states have a right and obligation to complain of wrong acts committed by sovereign states. Unfortunately, seventeen years after adoption by the UN General Assembly, Australia has failed its obligation to complain about the wrong acts committed by the Indonesian government regarding violations of human rights in West Papua. Australia should have played an important role during its step on the United Nations Human Rights Council between 2017 and 2020, but failed profoundly to recognise what is happening in its backyard. The Lombok Treaty ignores the fact that Australia signed the International Criminal Court Act in 2002, tasked with the aiming to end acts of violence such as torture, rape, enforced disappearance, brutality based on racial, cultural, political, and religious bias. I thank you all for your kind attention.
Chris Lynch, a white New Guinean Australian of Gaelic heritage who writes and teaches, will summarise the affirmative argument. Chris resides in Wurundjeri country near Mary Creek and is now writing a novel. Let's invite Chris to make his case that Australia is supporting West Papua.
Thank you, Sarah, and good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and Jacob. Before concluding the affirmative team's arguments, I'd like to briefly discuss Australia's engagement with Indonesia, including trade and people-to-person connections. Before I do that, I'd just very briefly like to address some of the arguments made so far by the negative team. Firstly, we've had, obviously heard a lot about the violence that happens in West Papua, and we utterly condemn that violence. We have no disagreement with the fact that terrible things are happening in West Papua. And this violence has been and is being condemned by Australians, including government members of parliament and senators in Canberra. So that Australia is doing something as far as responding to that violence. Secondly, the argument of appeasement fails because that was an example of wars of aggression across internationally, agreed international borders. There is no suggestion that Australia, for example, is going to go to war against Indonesia. There are many tragedies in the world. We know that. We have assisted with Ukraine in its fight against Russia, but we have been invited there by a country that is internationally recognised. So, the closer we get to home, the more complex the relationship to another country becomes. And so, we need to engage with that complexity. And rightly or wrongly, that happens most of the time through diplomacy rather than force. So, to come back to Australia's engagement with Indonesia, I'd like to talk about trade and people-to-person connections. These are important because without them, we can't expect to have much influence on what Indonesia does or doesn't do. In terms of trade, there are billions of dollars in two-way trade between our countries. Indonesia is Australia's thirteenth-largest trading partner. Cattle, beef, iron, wheat, honey, petroleum, coal. Some estimate that Indonesia will be the fifth-largest economy in the world by 2030. Twenty thirty. In 2018, the Comprehensive Strategic Partnership was signed between our countries, which is focused on, among other things, improving the connections between our peoples and enhancing economic trade and development. In 2020, the Indonesia-Australia Comprehensive Economic Partnership Agreement entered into force, aimed at liberalising trade. Did you know that there are around 2,500 Australian businesses currently exporting to Indonesia? And that number will only rise. There are challenges in our relationship, not least mutual distrust between our peoples and citizens. According to the Lowy Institute, Indonesians' trust in Australia has slipped 20 points in ten years, from 75% in 2011 to 55% in 2021. Agreements like the nuclear submarine deal haven't helped, and many Indonesians see Australia as a coloniser who thinks sending aid gives us licence to interfere and criticise. However, there are increasing people-to-person connections between our nations. We know that Australia loves Bali. 1.1 million Australians travel there every year. But Indonesians are also visiting Australia in increasing numbers, over 100,000 for tourism, business, and study. Before COVID hit, 23,000 Indonesian students were studying in Australia. Now, there are almost 15,000, including West Papua students. Many of my own students here in Melbourne are Indonesian, and they're very curious about Australia and open to learning new things, including things about their own country. All of this is relevant to West Papua because West Papuans are currently Indonesian citizens and because a strong and stable relationship is the only way to overcome mutual distrust and allow Australia to help West Papuans more specifically. For example, through resettling refugees and exercising diplomatic pressure, where possible, without destabilising our relationship. So, to sum up the affirmative team's arguments. As our first speaker Gordon argued, we need to understand the complex context of West Papua in history and its increasing integration with the rest of Indonesia. We cannot undo the past. Australia's new Labour government is prioritising a strong relationship with Indonesia, which may in time bear fruit for West Papua. However, the Indonesian relationship has been fraught in recent decades with, as we've heard, issues such as asylum seeker boats, live cattle export, terrorist attacks, spying, drug smuggling, and not least East Timor, in which Australian soldiers were deployed to what had only been a few weeks before Indonesian territory. Tensions have often been high with Indonesia, and we need to focus on respectful dialogue. This respectful dialogue is critical if we are to have influence on what's happening in West Papua. Our second speaker Ross explained the current geopolitical realities of our region as well as the history of West Papua's annexation. The US, the UN, and Australia were all involved explicitly or implicitly. Since then, Indonesia has become an important regional partner, however, and despite tensions, cooperated on a range of security issues. This has led to the Lombok Treaty, which most Australians should know about, explicitly recognising Indonesia and Australia's territorial integrity and non-interference in internal affairs. affairs. Finally, the rise of China has led to significant shifts in power in our region, which requires us to be on good terms with a large and powerful neighbouring country, namely Indonesia. And as I've outlined, despite challenges, there are also increasing economic ties between Indonesia and Australia, which provide enormous benefits to both Australians and Indonesians, including West Papuaans. In time, it'll help build trust between our countries and allow us to give more specific help to West Papuaans. In conclusion, ladies and gentlemen, we in the affirmative team believe that Australia is doing enough to support West Papua at the present time, especially with the new government. All three of us personally support the West Papuaan struggle for human rights and self-determination. We do not deny in any way the human rights issues outlined by the negative team, or the Melanesian culture of half the people in West Papua. We also don't deny that there is more Australia could be doing. However, we have to face the fact that there are real limits to what Australia can do to help West Papua, given that it remains part of the nation of Indonesia and the West Papuaan struggle lacks significant support by the people of Australia. However, we have to, sorry, Australia is a colonising power with serious human rights issues of its own, and has a complete lack of credibility in the region when criticizing other nations. Doing more than Australia currently is doing may actually harm West Papuaans in the long run. Rocking the boat could have serious consequences. Most importantly, Australia needs to put the interests of Australia and Australians first, while continuing to honour our bilateral and international obligations and making criticism when necessary. The former coalition government made criticisms of Indonesia during its time. In time, perhaps a shift in the regionalist Asia-Pacific consensus on the status quo will allow us to do more than we're currently doing. Perhaps the United Nations will add West Papua to the decolonisation list. Perhaps a groundswell of support by Australians for West Papuaans will push our government to do more. Perhaps the Lombok Treaty with Indonesia will be overturned, or a closer relationship between our peoples will allow for more criticism and more diplomatic pressure. Until such a time, the Australian government's room to move is limited, and that is why we believe Australia is currently doing enough to support West Papua. Thank you.
Senator Janet Rice, who served as a Australian, wait, Senator Janet Rice, who has served as a Greens representative in the Australian Parliament in Canberra since 2013, is our final speaker. The only Australian political party that supports the rights of the West Papua people to self-determination is the Australian Greens. Many thanks, Senator.
Thank you, Sarah, and thank you everyone for being with us today, particularly West Papua people, particularly Jacob Rumbek. It's a real honour to be speaking with you in the audience today. And I want to acknowledge that we are on the lands of the Bunurong and the Warangri peoples, and pay our respects to their elders, past and present, and to be committing ourselves to be working for justice and working for treaties with our First Nations brothers and sisters here, which is so relevant when we're talking about self-determination and justice for the people of West Papua. Is Australia doing enough to be supporting West Papua? It is clear the answer is a resounding no. And tragically, you only need to look, you don't need to look beyond the tragic death of Zode Hillapak, who was a West Papua who died in jail just in the last week. Zode was arrested for flying the Morning Star flag on the 1st of December last year, along with seven of his colleagues. They were all jailed, and he has just died in jail in the last week of a mystery illness. He is the latest West Papua who has died and has suffered under the brutal occupation of the Indonesian people, of the West Papua people, of the invasion of West Papua. As my colleague Pablo has so eloquently outlined, the brutal history, the hundreds of thousands of people killed, the many more people who have been dispossessed, the land that has been stolen, the environmental degradation that has gone on as part of that, there has been too much blood that has been spilt, and it is time for it to stop. And as my colleague Maurice from Vanuatu also said, there is a way forward, and he outlined the legal framework which the West Papua provisional government are now pursuing of getting West Papua put on the UN decolonisation list, so that then can be determined, then the West Papua people can determine for themselves and have that self-determination over their future. And that is what Australia needs to be supporting. That is what Australia needs to be acknowledging, the legal right of the West Papua people to self-determination. It's not just a moral right or a political right, as strong as those are, the international legal right that Australia should be getting behind and supporting. But yet, the opposition here have been arguing that we're doing enough. Clearly, we're not. I mean, their arguments basically were pretty spurious, I thought, with the first one saying that, you know, we didn't do enough in the past, but we're doing enough now. Frankly, there is so much more we can be doing now, and that doing something is enough, that the fact that I speak out as a Greens senator about speeches in West Papua, and I think I am the only one that's spoken out in recent years, that that's enough, that we are visiting West Papua. Yes, that's very good that the new government is visiting West Papua, but it's not enough. And then, of course, the geopolitical reality. And yes, we have to acknowledge the geopolitical reality. We have to acknowledge the complexity of their relationship with Indonesia. But that actually means we've got to be doing more. We've got to be having greater diplomatic engagement with Indonesia. Yep, and then with very important relationship, very important economic connections between our countries. But the relationship will be stronger, and the security of the Pacific, the security and stability in Indonesia, as well as in Australia, will be stronger if we put human rights at the centre of that. And that means, I mean, otherwise, the West Papua is just going to continue to fester. It's not going to go away. The brutal force that Indonesia is applying to West Papua at the moment, it's not going to stop the independence movement. It's not going to stop the legitimate aspirations of the West Papua people to be allowed to determine their own future. And so actually, Australia being a critical friend for Indonesia is what's needed. And that's, we need to do so much more to be that critical friend. And I'm going to use the rest of my time to outline just what more we should be doing. There's a very simple thing to begin with at the moment, and that's which doesn't require any complexity, any consideration of the geopolitical reality, and that's for us to acknowledge that the human rights abuses are occurring in West Papua, for our government to acknowledge that and to say that upfront, that they are happening and they are unacceptable. And then to stop providing training to the officials who are actually complicit in those human rights abuses. We fund the Jakarta Centre for Law Enforcement and Compliance, I think it is, which is jointly funded and run by the Australian government. There is very little in terms of human rights, very little in terms of what's done to make sure that the people we are training aren't human rights abusers, and I've asked questions about, in Senate estimates, about that. The very least, we should be saying to Indonesia, no, people who aren't, we are not going to train Indonesian police who have a history of being human rights abusers, a history and are complicit in what's been going on in West Papua, and we want them to make, the Indonesian government to make sure that human rights are respected. The second thing we need to be doing is to be holding our major corporations to account who are operational in West Papua, and make sure that they too are supportive of the legitimate rights of the West Papua people. We know that Rio Tinto profited so much from the Grasberg mine, and we've got other companies that are profiting in West Papua. We need to be holding them to account. And then, thirdly, we then need to be being much more active and much more vocal on the international stage in support of the request of the Pacific Island Forums for addressing the root causes of the conflict, and in support of the motion being put forward by Vanuatu to, for West Papua to be placed on the decolonisation list. So we need to be being really outspoken at an international level, and then applying pressure on Indonesia, the diplomatic pressure on Indonesia, for Indonesia to immediately withdraw its forces from West Papua, and for Indonesia to allow free and unfettered rights of human rights observers, beginning with UN human rights observers. So it is very, very clear, we are not doing enough. We are not upholding human rights and/or the moral rights, the legal rights of the West Papua people. We have not taken steps that we can, we should, and we must take. For the sake of Zode Hillapak and all the hundreds of thousands of West Papua people who have sadly been deceased and who are suffering now, killed by Indonesians before him, we have to do more, and I'm confident that we can do more and we should do more. Thank you.
Our discussion is now over, but could we just, like, give an applause for, like, everyone here for what they've debated for? About just like what, I can't even speak today. About what they talked about, of what we've done to us, what we have done and what we haven't done to West Papua is just something. But I would like to turn the floor over to Dr Jonathan Benny from Monash University and the Victorian Debating Association. Dr Benny will summarise the two debating teams' performances.
Thank you very much to everybody for coming. There are a lot of esteemed people in the audience, a lot of speakers today, so I definitely acknowledge their presence before I begin. I'll start by talking about my role. I have three kinds of roles that I'm playing here today. One is an academic who focuses on China and Asian studies at Monash University. The second one is I'm the former president, but for a long time I was the president of the Debaters' Association of Victoria, so I have a lot of experience in facilitating debate, particularly at school students. And then, thirdly, I'm a researcher of political communication. So one of the things that interests me about this process of debate and the process of campaigning for West Papua is what the best way of campaigning will be. So I don't want to treat the topic in a very abstract way, so it's very important that I begin by acknowledging and reflecting on the seriousness of this topic and the importance of this topic, and the many, you know, terrible and regrettable things that have happened in West Papua. I don't want to ignore those things and talk about the debate as if it's very abstract. But I wanted to also say that the debate isn't supposed to answer the question one way or the other. The point of having the debate is to use the topic as a prompt for reflection on what to do, how to do it, what will happen if particular things are done, and to use criticism from your opposition to change and strengthen your own views. So it's very unsurprising that I think the negative side of the debate will have more support in this room today. But I also think that the people on the negative side and the supporters on the negative side should be thinking about how the criticisms that were made, or the points that were made by the other side, can be used to strengthen and reflect on and change views. Also, debate allows people to test out and assess forms and styles of communication. So the question is like, what is the best way of getting the message across? What language is the best language to use? What tone is the best tone to use? Should you be angry? Should you be hopeful? Should you be sad and regretful? What has the best effect on the audience? What makes them persuaded to support what you're talking about? All of these strategies are very important things in the debate, and the participants in the debate and the audience of the debate can reflect on these. Now to move on to some of the issues in the debate. My first general observation about the debate is that there's a lot of historical background in the debate, and a lot of history in the debate. And obviously, you cannot talk about West Papua and Indonesia without talking about the history. But nevertheless, the first speaker of the debate reminded us that this debate is in the present tense. It's about what is happening now, and it's about what organisations, what people exist now that can facilitate change in West Papua. One thing I would say for this side of the debate is, is is not the same as should. And so that there were times on this side of the debate where the speakers would talk about what should happen or what could happen. That's not the same as what is happening now. So when the affirmative side said, well, we should put this debate in the present tense, that doesn't mean what should happen, it means what is happening. Nevertheless, a trap for both sides of the debate is to focus a lot on history. And I don't mean that the history is unimportant, but I think it's a lesson in terms of political campaign. In a limited time, the status quo is very important. What's happening now is very important. The historical background is often difficult and complex, but to hear incidents, stories like the one that Janet brought up in the final speech, at the beginning of the final speech, does put the debate in the present tense, and it talks about what we're doing now. So that's one thing that I think that, you know, fluctuated between both teams in the debate, focusing on what can currently happen now, focusing on the present and the status quo. Then the next word of the topic is enough. And of course, enough, as the affirmative side mentioned, is not an easy word to define. It's really a little bit subjective. It's hard to measure. So it was interesting how the different sides responded to the word enough. I think on the affirmative side, there was a lot of discussion of enough being limited by the circumstances. Obviously, that makes sense to some degree because there cannot not be limits, there are obviously limits. But what are those limits? Well, it's difficult to know what the limits exactly are, and perhaps on the affirmative side, they overestimated the limits, and I'll talk about that a little bit more. On the negative side, at first, in Pablo's speech, there was a discussion of appeasement, that essentially the problem was that Australia was appeasing Indonesia, and I don't necessarily think that was automatically meant in the sense of the Second World War, but it was used to mean that Australia was thinking too much of Indonesian needs and not thinking enough of West Papua needs. And I think that that was a strong way of characterising it. Still, I think that the more powerful arguments on this side came on the second and third speakers from Maurice and Janet, because they focused on what could be done that isn't being done. So that you can see, for example, they were brought up in the final speech, I think you've just heard them and I won't repeat them too much, but the legal structure, things that we can stop from an Australian perspective. Then, a couple of other points. One is an interesting point, and it doesn't kind of necessarily go one way or the other. Discussions about indigenous people in different cultures were brought up at different points in the debate. So on the affirmative side of the debate, there is, you know, the sense that the voice to parliament and similar policies represents a trend in changes of attitudes to First Nations people. Then there are comparative arguments from both sides about other indigenous people in the Oceanic region. I think these comparisons are useful, but it can be dangerous to group all of these different indigenous groups together as if they're all the same and they have the same needs. I think if you are talking about indigenous principles, it is useful to talk about the specifics of the West Papua experience or the Melanesian experience in perhaps more detail than we heard. The final thing I want to talk about is Australia's relationship with Indonesia. And I think on the affirmative side, it was clearly established that a relationship with Indonesia is a necessity. However, where does West Papua fit into this equation? The negative team stated that Australia does not, this was at Maurice's speech, it does not acknowledge all the needs of West Papua despite knowing about, despite the evidence it doesn't do that. And this is a powerful response, but it still doesn't get to the core of like, well, exactly how Australia should deal with Indonesia. Then there were questions of diplomacy and economics, and I think these are without doubt valid points. However, the affirmative side seemed to rely on the assumption that, I will get to, I'll finish in a moment, seemed to rely on the assumption that if Australia supported West Papua, it will lead to broad economic harm with the Australia-Indonesia relationship. And that is not necessarily true, and I haven't brought in many of my opinions here, but I'll bring an opinion about the Australia-China relationship. Your economic relationship can go on quite smoothly when neither side trusts each other. So economic relationship does not rule out diplomatic criticism, and it does not necessarily rule out the ideas that the senator brought up at the end. I'm going to say one last thing. There was a very interesting point about the credibility of Australia as a critic of Indonesia, given its colonial history. And then a comment popped up in the chat during the final speech, which I noticed, and it was a little bit, it was about activism rather than diplomacy. And that led me to one final comment about the Et cela m'a amené à un dernier commentaire sur le débat. Pendant le débat, les gens se concentrent sur les gouvernements, mais le sujet ne disait pas "gouvernement", il disait "Australie". Et donc, aucun des speakers du débat ne parle de l'activisme individuel. Ils ne discutent rarement les groupes de communauté. Ils ne discutent rarement la façon dont les médias peuvent être utilisés pour gagner du soutien pour les gens. Et je pense que cette observation prend le débat entier en revue à où nous sommes ici. Et mon propre contexte comme un type de non-profit, vous savez, comme représentant d'un groupe de communauté non affilié au gouvernement dans l'Association de Débats et votre propre expérience dans différents groupes non affiliés avec West Papua. Et donc nous ne devrions pas toujours dépendre du gouvernement pour résoudre nos problèmes. Et le gouvernement ne va jamais faire tout ce que nous voulons qu'il fasse. Et donc c'est une bonne façon de conclure mon résumé du débat parce que ça met l'onus sur nous, les citoyens, et pas seulement sur les représentants élus et le gouvernement. Donc je pense que c'est un point bon à finir. Merci beaucoup.
Merci Dr Bennie pour ce résumé, c'était incroyable. Enfin, je demande à Dr Jacob Rumbyak de venir pour quelques minutes.
Bon après-midi à tous. Merci Sarah. Sur behalf of the people of West Papua and also at Professional Government of West Papua. Firstly, I would like to thank the Melbourne City Council and especially Ricky Bonichi, who made it possible for our wonderful Women's Office to organize this very important event today in this beautiful building. On behalf of the people of West Papua, I would like to congratulate all the wonderful debaters for presenting your cases so strongly. And Dr Jonathan Bennie for your support and continued support of the debate and also all things about West Papua. And also beautiful Zara, daughter of the great Mr Klovitz Muamba from the Democratic Republic of Congo. And also Miss Bernie Golding for stepping up at such short notice to open this beautiful event. I also want to acknowledge the Gillies, the Kakis family. Papuaans love family, doing things together. So you can imagine how we feel when we hear Julian and his mom playing West Papua National Anthem. So today, lots of Papua there, inside and outside also, they join us for follow this event. Of course, our five-star Energy Office in Dockland wouldn't exist without the West Papuaan collective, who believe in our future are here today with us. My full thank you for managing to keep paying our rent during COVID lockdown when so many other businesses failed. I also would like to thank politicians, civil activists, women, youth, children, also our international supporter around the world. I also would like to thank our brothers, sisters from Pacific Island country, Africa Caribbean. And also we have a lot of support from twenty-seven European countries, based in a European parliament in Brussels. And of course, we have some in the Middle East and South Latino America. I also would like to thank the people of West Papua inside because today they also join us in Zoom. Before I finish my speak, I also would like to thank the President of Professional Government of West Papua, Mr Benny Wenda, who are based in UK. And also the Prime Minister of Transition Government of West Papua, Mr Edison Warumi. And also Chairman of Parliament of Professional Government of West Papua, Mr Boktar Tabuni, based with the people in the territory of West Papua today. They also, together with people inside West Papua, join us in Zoom. I believe that all of us in here come from different nations, different backgrounds. We're here because we have one mission as the world family, to look after the world better place and peace and justice place. We start from ourselves and this small area here and of course Pacific. Because by this debate, we can get both positive for work together as a world family to keep the world peace and justice. I would like to borrow the language used by late professor Jacob Sahetapeh, he's from Malacans, but he's a senior lawyer in Indonesia. He said that even if the lies run as fast as lightning, one time it will defeat it by the truth. I hope that what we talk today will prove tomorrow. Thank you.
Encore une fois, je voudrais remercier tout le monde pour leur participation ici et aussi pour nos visiteurs sur Zoom aussi. Pour ceux qui sont ici en personne, nous voudrions vous offrir des améliorations sur le balcon des Beatles. Donc juste par la salle verte, à l'entrée et à travers le hall. Encore une fois, merci beaucoup pour votre participation. J'ai une question. Questions. Bonne question, mais je pense qu'il y aura de l'opportunité sur le balcon, certainement, on va passer. Et si vous choisissez de contacter l'un des experts qui a présenté, ils seront tous à travers la salle. Je veux offrir une dernière boucle d'applaudissements à nos débats aujourd'hui. La diversité et la discussion riche était incroyable et certainement les voies à suivre étaient incroyables et probablement la meilleure que j'ai entendue en termes de défis de West Papua. Donc merci beaucoup et une dernière boucle d'applaudissements, s'il vous plaît. Merci, nous ferons notre chemin à travers le hall.